Good morning. The time is now 9:00 AM on Monday, April 29th, 2024. I called the Lexington Select Board to order. This meeting is being conducted in person. We have a Zoom session active for staff to attend. Members of the public can observe the meeting in person. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and archived by Lex Media for future on-demand viewing. We are not, however, transmitting the session live. I'm Joe Pato, the board chair, and we will introduce each member by themselves so that you get to know us. And then Ms. Hay, who is at the end here, will take the lead in setting the stage for the discussion. And as this morning's meeting is a working session, we will not be taking public comment. We will, however, take comments at tonight's regular meeting. Ms. Hay?
Thank you. So, welcome. I am Jill Hay. I believe we all met several years back when we worked together. And so I have been on the board for six years. And the format for today, we have about a 40-minute window. So we're going to do very quick introductions of ourselves. We're going to ask you to do a brief introduction of yourselves. And then we have about 10 questions. So we're looking to keep it to maybe, you know, two-minute-ish answers, two, three minutes. And that'll give us a couple of minutes at the end if there's anything either you want to ask us or you have additional things you don't think we asked that you want to make sure we know. So, thank you and welcome. Will you introduce yourself? Is that what you said, Joe, you want to say?
Yeah. Good morning. I'm Suzy Barry. I'm the current vice chair of the board. It's good to see you both. I think last time you were here as chair of the board. I've been on the board now almost 10, 10 years? Something like that, way too long. Thank you for being here this morning.
As I said, I'm Joe Pato, the current chair. And I've been on the board, this is my 12th year. And it seems like just a day or two.
Doug Lucetti worked with you on the screening committee last time, and I've been on the board, I think this is my eighth, going into my eighth.
And I'm Mark Sandin. I'm in my fifth year.
All right. So I think I will kick us off. And, you know, our first question really is, can you just tell us a little bit? I want to actually, let me ask you to introduce yourselves. I'm sorry, I skipped my own process. Go ahead.
So I'm Alan Gould. I'm president of Municipal Resources. And in case you aren't aware, MRI is now actually in its 35th year of service to communities throughout New England, now beyond. And it's great to see the stability on the board. We don't see that a lot in communities anymore. It seems like a lot of things are changing, and the boards are changing with them. So I think that's true.
I'm Buzz Stapczynski, and I assisted Alan and Bob Mercer in the search seven, eight years ago. And I'm happy to be back and looking forward to discussing this with you folks.
Perfect. Thank you. So now I will kick us off. Can you just tell us a little bit about the two most recent successful searches that you've done for communities you would consider comparable to Lexington? And in particular, can you tell us what you have done to ensure diversity in the applicant pool?
I mean, I'll throw one out there. I mean, I like to use North Andover because I think that, you know, the demographics of North Andover are fairly similar. We did employ a female candidate there. It seems like we're running about 50%, so about 50% of the recruitments we get, they're a female or a minority. So I guess North Andover, I would throw out there. And how do we get the diverse candidates? Well, some of it is, you know, we advertise heavily in ICMA. And, you know, our feeling is that if you're in the profession, or you want to be in the profession, you're going to be engaged with ICMA. And ICMA is comprised of a bunch of different groups. There's a black and Hispanic group. There's a female group. And they're all part of ICMA. One member of the team, Carol Grantfield, who couldn't be here because she's traveling home from Florida, actually is in the woman's spot of the ICMA, and she's taught lessons there and whatnot, nationally, for them. So I would throw that one out there, and Buzz?
Well, I would think you could look to Westford, Mass. Westford, they, the previous town manager was a female. And they, they asked, you know, can we find a diverse pool? And we did. The woman who was hired there, Kristin Lass, was what we'd consider sort of a non-traditional candidate. She was the planning and economic development director. And she was the assistant town manager, county administrator level in Grafton. And, you know, she, they hired her as the town manager in Westford about a year and a, well, three months ago. About 14, 15 months ago. She started in January of '23. And so, you know, those are two. There's one in the neighborhood here, Westford, Westboro. Seven years ago, this, actually, the assistant town manager stepped into the town manager role, Christie Williams. And just, we're waiting now. The background investigation is, is with the select board in Southwick. And they're going to be appointing officially a woman to that role, Nicole Parker, who emerged in the searches. We had several women in the search, but she emerged from the pool as the best fit for that community. So those are three. Two years ago in Berlin, Massachusetts, again, a much smaller community, but Berlin. Kristin Rubin was hired there as the county administrator in Berlin. So I think we've had good fortune in having a diverse pool. And we, you know, we, we think we would have a very diverse pool here.
We've met some really tough challenges, particularly without naming any names, picking up a client in Connecticut. And Bob and Buzz are really good, and they actually started looking nationwide at recruiters that we did not do. So, because there's always a number two or a number three that may have had a better fit, that may not have had as good a fit for that particular community. And then we can always find out, we can always find their resumes online, and very often we can watch interviews. And they've hunted down some really good people from very diverse backgrounds to try to fill some very specific needs. So they've been, they've been really good at that.
We wouldn't consider that poaching so much, but oftentimes today, the, you know, everything is transparent. Everything is in the newspaper or online. So we know who's interviewing, and we know who didn't get the jobs. And oftentimes their interviews or their resumes, and there's one instance in Connecticut, the resumes of the candidates were all online. So I went through the resumes, and I'm saying, wow, this guy, you know, he kind of hits the hot buttons that they were looking for in this community. Reached cold call, reached out, and it, you know, worked out for, for the community. But it takes, you know, we do the digging.
Thank you.
Good morning. So what other town manager searches are you currently working on in Massachusetts, the New England area? And would there be any impact on those with our search in terms of our timing? I think you've seen our timeline was laid out in the RFQ. It's pretty aggressive. So can you speak to that?
So we're really kind of selective. We don't put in for every community that we see. We probably put in for about 50%, particularly in Massachusetts. In New Hampshire, we do almost all of them. I have a pretty significant team in New Hampshire. So I would say that in Mass right now, you have maybe three?
Well, right now, we're wrapping up Southwick. And then we're, we're big into Barnstable County. The Barnstable County administrator is retiring. And so we're, we've got the job ad out. The resumes will come in in, well, in two weeks, the 13th, the resumes are in. So we're in the middle of that. But in terms of timing, you know, we're just, we wrapped up Southwick. Barnstable County is, is live for us. This would be, you know, next on our agenda. So the short answer is yes, we have the time. And we have the bandwidth to take on a project of this magnitude.
And that's by our choice that we put in for, you know, we're very selective in the, in the communities we work with because we just don't want to be doing, we don't want to be competing with our own pools. So if you're doing, you know, two or three towns that are similar at the same time, those candidates are going to be the same. So then there's always questions about, well, you know, where's the loyalty to? So we just try to avoid that. And we're very particular. You know, if we don't get Lexington, then we'll be looking for the next one that is like that to fill that gap.
Thank you.
Thank you. So could you tell us a little bit about the qualifications of the staff who will be assigned to the Lexington recruitment you began to in your introduction? If you could go a little further into it, and what is the expected breakdown of principals versus associates on the staff you would assign?
Sure. So you may not remember my background. I spent most of my career in law enforcement, but I've been running the company now for 15 years. And in that amount of time, we've been going from one or two recruitments a year to now we'll do 40 or 50 a year. And that's between all the, all the states we covered. And we've done recruitments as far south as Georgia and right up to the Canadian border. We just finished Prescott, Maine, which is right there on the Canadian border. So I'm heavily involved in all of these. So I've managed the managers, so to speak, and you'd be seeing my face here for interviews and whatnot when we come down. Buzz and Buzz and Bob, I've learned that the model is that, you know, if we have, Buzz and Bob now have been with us for, I don't know, eight or nine years. Anyways, doing this work exclusively with us. So they know this Mass community, and they, and they do Connecticut as well. And then I have people that just focus on New Hampshire. So again, law enforcement, I was a town manager for four, five years, and then I came into, into this, this line. Buzz, of course, 30 years.
He was a town manager, most recently 25 years in Andover, retired. And, you know, I have the bandwidth to take on projects like this. And my partner who's not here, Bob Mercer, he's out of state at the moment, but he's assigned to this as well. And he's, I mean, I've got 35 years as town manager. Bill Ricka and Toot, they like him a lot in Burlington. He's had two stints in Burlington as a town administrator in Burlington, so.
And Carol Grantfield, who I mentioned, I think I mentioned, she's on her way back from Florida now. Carol's probably been an administrator, manager in four or five states at this point, from Virginia to Maine. I'll say that she is a real pioneer, pretty much. She's been doing this for so long, really a time when, when women just weren't in the profession. She's highly regarded, heavily involved with ICMA, lecturing for ICMA. She does the recruitments with us, and she does a lot of our wage and classification studies. She does interims for me as necessary. And I'll see, pretty much, she does a lot of personnel policies and whatnot for communities. And then the fifth member of the pool is Elizabeth Mensinger, we refer to her as Liz. She doesn't have experience in the field, but this is, I think she actually came in and presented with us last time that we came in. She's really the back, she takes care of all of us on the backside. So she corresponds with all the candidates. If we said to her, Liz, there was a really good candidate in this, in this community, I can't remember their name, but they had this background, she'd be on that like that, and she'd get us that, she'd reach out to that candidate. So she coordinates everything behind the scenes so that we can all focus on what we all get paid to do.
Thank you.
All right. Can you tell us how MRI would solicit for interested candidates? Including how you might reach out to individuals who may not otherwise be considering Lexington for the position? And include any specific outreach beyond ICMA or MMA?
Okay, so excluding those things, we do the other states as well. You know, New Hampshire, Vermont, Rhode Island, Connecticut, Maine, the other New England states. Because you just never know who's reading it, may say to somebody else, oh gee, did you see this Lexington is looking? So we do that. But Bob and Buzz, he used the term poaching. We kind of know who's available or who might be available, who's really good in a spot, and this might be a great step up for them. I mean, that's, that's what's important about knowing the territory, knowing this area, is there are people that might be very happy where they are, but the next step for them would be Lexington. Because, I mean, this is just one of those premier communities, you know that. So we're not afraid to reach out, connect with those people. As I mentioned earlier, we'll go and we'll look at other recruitments around the country that we haven't been involved in. And we'll take a look at who the runners-up may have been there to see if they're a better fit for us than that other community. But it's really that network. So you see two of us sitting before you today. There's, there's, on a daily basis, there's probably about 30 people doing work in MRI in communities reaching from, like I said, Georgia to the Canadian border, as far west as Ohio. So that's a pretty big reach, and whether they're on the law enforcement side, the fire side, the finance side, we all kind of work together. So that almost works as a feeder system for us in identifying candidates.
Thank you.
And we have folks contacting us. In a search several years ago, I cold-called to a person, you know, they were in a AAA community, and the community was AAA. And I said, you know, there's an opening, I know you're interested. No, no, when, you know, I'll pick a town, when Walpole becomes open. I'm really interested in Walpole. So, you know, people have their eyes on communities, and they know who's moving within the profession. They know what's happening in New England. So they, you know, they will, they'll call us when they think there's some opportunity out there for them in a particular search. Now, I don't know, you know, do you think I'd be a good fit with that select board? You can talk.
That happens every week. I get those emails and those phone calls from people. I always ask for the resume, and I flip it to Liz. Usually I'll do a phone call with that person so that I can figure out where they are, kind of on the scale, what communities they might be good for. And I'll flip it to Liz. She'll put it in our database with my notes in it. So that when, when, you know, if I had talked to somebody three months ago that might be good for Lexington, she'll flip that to me, and I'll tell her, yeah, send an invitation to that candidate.
Thank you.
So what recommendations would you make to ensure the board selects the most effective search screening committee? And what characteristics and criteria do you think might be particularly useful on a screening committee?
I mean, I like diversity on the screening committee. So I like to have somebody, you know, representing, and I'm trying to go back and remember more specifically about the needs of the community at the time we did this last time. But I would like to see somebody represent the elders of the community, the minorities of the community, and who the big, you know, the big player groups in the community. You know, in some places, it's a koanis or it's Alliance Club, you know. Whoever those players are in a particular community, we like to see them represented. We often like to see somebody representing the schools, involve a superintendent or a principal. We've had students, we've had a student on committees in the past. We've had the religious sector represented on those committees. So to me, it's all about the diversity of that committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. So what would you say is the most important question that, that we can ask a candidate? Or that we, the screening committee, the town, can ask a candidate? And in particular, a question that can help us gauge a candidate's ability both to work effectively with a statehouse delegation, where we have some big issues coming up that are going to need that, but also to work collaborative, that they can work collaboratively with a very active citizenry, but also be a leader for a large, highly professionalized staff? So it's really very different skills, and how do we help figure out that somebody has all of those?
That's really a few different questions, you know? And we ask those during, if you're familiar with our process, if you remember, we always do phone interviews with maybe the top third of the candidates because we don't want to exclude anybody. So we do this, you know, we include everybody until such a point that they kind of fail us. So we've asked all those questions. And to me, honestly, one of the most important things you can do in selecting a candidate is to have that really thorough background investigation done, and then ask questions based on that background. Because everybody's coming from a different place. So they've taken a career path. They've maybe been in this place for two years, and then they were in a place for five years. And it's, you know, one of the important questions is why Lexington, why now? And why are you the right fit for this community? And listen to what they have to say. But to me, I'm a huge proponent in that the background is a really significant piece of the hiring process. A lot of people think that the process is over when you get to that. To me, that's, that's where it all is. But I guess if I was going to ask one question, it would be, you know, why us, why now, and why you? I guess that's three questions, but if I, if it was an essay, I'd.
Mine had three parts, too.
Thank you.
So do you think that the board, you know, and the screening committee should consider non-traditional candidates? And I think you touched on this earlier. Whether that be a former elected official, someone who might have served in another community as a mayor, someone who has some military experience or a chief executive officer from a nonprofit, something like that. Do you, how do you advise on that?
Absolutely. And that's, I think that that's what we've always told people, is that we really look for those non-traditional candidates. I can point to a former military, you know, a colonel coming out of the Air Force. I'll give you an example of Portsmouth, Rhode Island, where I went down. It was my first foray into, into Rhode Island, and it's all partisan politics down there. So the board itself is partisan. They said, you'll never get us to agree on a candidate. Well, about eight weeks later, they agreed on a candidate. But I had to sell this candidate because he was a captain in the Navy, and he was assigned to Brussels with NATO. And the council couldn't understand why I wanted him in the finals. And I interviewed him. He did such a good job explaining it. His job with NATO was if there was a fleet that was on the move, and they had to take, they had to go to a port that we didn't have treaties with, we didn't have things set up for, for housing the ship, for providing provisions and all that stuff. It was his job to do that, to work with those other countries, get the boat in, get the service, get what they needed, and get them out. And he's still, so I think I probably did that about 12 years ago, and he's still the manager in Portsmouth, Rhode Island. So there, there are a lot of, I mean, to me, that's, we're really challenged right now to find that next generation of outstanding local government leaders. And sometimes those people have to come from without, from outside of the profession. And I think that we've been just very, very good at identifying those folks.
Thank you.
So what have you advised other municipal clients regarding paying for travel expenses for the screening committee interview, for the select board interview, especially for candidates outside of Massachusetts?
Well, I mean, we do these for management level, police, fire, and all of that. And generally, so this is what I try to do, is I like them to come up on their own nickel for the first interview because I think that that shows commitment on their part. And then I like to see the town offset. I don't like the, I don't like so much the reimbursement, but I like a fixed amount, say, you know, $500 to help defray your, your costs. And we've had really good luck with that. I can't think of too many first interviews where a town or city has paid to get the candidate up. The other thing is, I don't want people applying for a job without having experience to community. I mean, they're going to apply, but to have them come in and interview? I mean, it's an investment on our part throughout the process. It's an investment on your part, and when it comes down to final interviews, they're taking up a seat that somebody else could, could likely have if they're not a legitimate contender. So we like them to actually see the community. So I think that that's an investment that they have to make, is to come up and see the community, and they might as well schedule that for one of those interview minutes.
Thank you.
So are there aspects of the approach we outlined in the RFQ for consultant services that you would have advised the board to reconsider? Reading our RFQ, are there any things we should have reconsidered?
I don't, I don't think, nothing, nothing was unusual to us about it. We've seen some where we would ask, we, we think that they should reconsider, but there's, there's nothing in this that was a surprise or anything that I would suggest that should reconsider. Thank you.
So we're getting to the end of our questions here. So this is the, is there anything else you'd like to add, like why Lexington, why now?
So why Lexington? Yeah, I mean, you, you folks are a premier community. You know, I'd love, I grew up in Andover. You know, Buzz was the manager in Andover for a long time. There were some similarities to the, to the communities, for sure. And we just really like going after some of those really nice communities in Massachusetts. So, you know, that's why Lexington, why now? Because we handled you before, and we hate to lose clients. If you look at our, I'm sure that we attached our full reference list, and you'll see clients on there that we've maybe done three, four, five projects for. And to me, that's really the hallmark of the relationship that we have with communities. You know, Portsmouth, Rhode Island, again, is an example. We did fire chief there, we did police chief, and we did town manager twice. So, you know, it's, and that's repeated throughout our reference list, if you look. So that, that's why you folks, that's why now. And I guess I can't remember the third part of that question.
Why are you the right fit for this community?
I'm sorry?
Why are you the right fit for this community?
Because I think, I think we're the right fit for most communities in New Hampshire. I'm sorry, in Massachusetts, particularly with these guys. You know, I just think that we know the Commonwealth so well. Bob and Buzz are both very experienced managers in the Commonwealth. They're, they're connected very well. And I, I think that we just work so hard, you know? We're not doing these all over the country. We're not a big national firm. So we give you 100%, and we don't leave until it's done. You'll note that we have a, the guarantee in our proposal. And, you know, if it doesn't, if the first candidate doesn't work out, we just keep going. And there's no additional charges for that. If something falls apart within the first year, we just do it again. There's no additional charge other than advertising costs. I don't know too many people that do that. But that's our commitment to the communities that we serve. Well, thank you.
So is there anything else you want to share that we didn't ask you? And as part two of that, is there anything you want to ask us?
I would just share that, you know, we have been doing this for 35 years in Massachusetts. We do more work in Massachusetts than we do anyplace else. Some people think that, you know, because we are based in New Hampshire, that, you know, Massachusetts wouldn't be our strength. It is. I think we know it better than anybody else that, in the industry right now, really. I just know that we'll knock ourselves out. So I guess that's what I'd want you to hear.
And anything for us in particular?
No, I mean, the longevity of the board and, and, you know, the stability says so much. We worked with you before. We found the community great to work with. So I really don't have any questions for you folks at this point. I'd like to think that if we were awarded the contract, you know, we'd be getting to know each of you individually through some phone interviews or face-to-face interviews, whatever is preferred, so we can understand what each of you is looking for individually. And then we can put that whole puzzle together and listen to the community, see what the community is looking for, and then put the right candidate in front of you.
Thank you. I did have one question, just based on the RFQ, and I apologize because I don't remember exactly. But when you mentioned the community, were community sort of listening sessions included in the bid? Or was that an add-on to it?
No, no, that's included. So I know that we typically open up an email address so that people can send us emails. We share that with you, but it helps us, it helps inform us. And I know last time we were here, we did listening sessions at the library. We did one, I'm trying to remember if we went to the senior center as well. I think we did. We met with the seniors, and then we did an early evening listening session at the library because I was here for those, and I think Buzz was with me, Bob was with me.
And we did one in, in Baton Hall as well, I think, for folks. So we had several of them. We also, we also meet with the, the key department heads to get a sense of sort of, you know, what they'd be looking for in their next plot, if they could design their perfect plot. But we want to know what, you know, what, what the challenges and the opportunities are in the community. Because one of the things that a good candidate's going to ask us is, well, what's really going on? You know, what, what's happening? Of course, you know, they will have done all their, all good candidates, they'll be all over your, your, your meetings. They'll be watching your meetings. They'll, they'll be watching, you know, town meeting. They'll be looking at your publications to see what's, you know, kind of what's up in town. But then they're going to want to know, okay, what's the real story? So we want to be able to tell them what the strengths and weaknesses are, and what the opportunities and threats are. Because there, there are individuals that feel comfortable in, in kind of one situation or another. And if they're not comfortable with what is laying ahead in the community, you know, they'll back out and they'll say, no, you know, I'm, I don't, I don't, I don't do school construction anymore. I had it. You know, I've been burned out on, on school construction, you know?
And we need to know that, I'm sure.
And so do we on that.
Or they may say, I'm really, I, I, I just led my, my community in their, you know, 100th anniversary party. You know, I'm kind of excited about the Lex 250, you know? So, you know, there's people that come. So, you know, there's people that come with strengths and weaknesses and we like to tell them what, what lays ahead so that they can, you know, sort of figure out if they're the right fit. Because we'll bring you, we'll bring you candidates that can do the job. There, there is no question in my mind, we can bring you as many, you know, four or five, how many you want to interview, three, four, five. But then it's really, we tell select boards, it's the fit, you know? And, you know, are you comfortable with the, do you want to work with this person for X many years? Do you feel comfortable with them? Do they feel comfortable with you? Uh, and I think that's probably maybe the magic that, that we bring is that we try to bring you folks that would have an appropriate fit for the community.
Mr. Sandin had a question as well. You mentioned, uh, at one, one of your answers, you said it's, it's a little bit of a challenging time to find candidates right now. So I was wondering if you could just reflect on that a little bit more about how this time might compare to, say, the last time you were here and how we need to think about things this go around that might be a little different than last time.
So I think, uh, it's almost like, uh, municipal management skipped a generation. So an awful lot of, uh, senior managers have retired. COVID changed a lot of things. A lot of people, a lot of managers were just hanging on by a thread. They were going to get their communities through COVID. It was incredibly stressful. Uh, and as soon as it, it quieted down enough, they said, I've had enough and they, they bailed, they left. So, you know, on a police or a fire department, you've got sergeants and you've got lieutenants and you've got captains, and you don't have that in municipal management. Sometimes as an assistant manager, um, very often there isn't. So these folks are coming from planning or from finance or from HR. Um, and so we found this, this gap. Uh, so I think that last time we did this, the gap was not as prevalent as it is now, which means that we have to be more careful about, uh, an inclusionary process, including people until, in the process till we know that they either can't do the job or they wouldn't be a good fit. Um, I, I think that that's just critical in looking at non-traditional candidates. You've got to, at the same time, you've got a whole bunch of people in the military that are, that are retiring and we get a lot of inquiries from military folks. Um, uh, and, and that's, you know, so we have to make sure that we look at them. But that's kind of where that, that's kind of what's happening now. Uh, so it is the pools back where we did you, I should have looked. I'll bet we had more than 75 candidates maybe total when we did you last time. Certainly in the, in, you know, 12, 13 years ago, we were seeing a hundred plus candidates for a place like Lexington. And it's just like your police departments, right? When I was a, when I was a police chief, we'd have 300 candidates for a position. Now we're lucky to get 10. Um, so from a hundred candidates, we're now down to probably 25. So, uh, we have to work harder to reach out, to direct outreach and find the right pitch. Does that answer the question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think if there aren't further, we're going to say thank you very much. We really appreciate it and we do plan to make a decision today, so we'll be in touch.
Super, thank you very much.
Thanks so much for coming.
Thank you. Better coach and shake hands, but I know that we do have some worry about, so.
I have asthma that, uh, triggers my cough, so I try to avoid coughing near people.
It's brutal right now.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good to see you both.
So colleagues, we could take a five-minute break?
That would be great.
Why, why, why?
Mr. Pato, do you guys want to pause your, uh, mic for five minutes?
Will do, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Jim, just checking in to make sure you haven't started yet.
It is, uh, now 9:45. I'm Joe Pato, Board Chair, and I bring this out of recess. Um, and we just closed the window for environmental control in the room and, uh, we are back in session. So I'm the board chair. The board members are going to introduce themselves as we go around and I'm going to ask Ms. Hay, who is going to be our lead on the search committee and activity, to take, uh, control of the meeting. Ms. Hay?
Thank you, so welcome. Thank you for coming. I understand you are missing a firm event of some sort, so we appreciate that you're, you're opting to choose us. We, we are grateful. Uh, my name is Jill Hay. I have been a member of the board for six years. Um, and I think we're just going to each go around and then, um, I'll ask you to introduce yourself and then we have, um, about 10 questions or so, so we can try and keep to sort of like two, three minutes per answer and then we'll have a couple of minutes for wrap-up if you have questions for us or any follow-up that you feel we didn't ask you, that you want to share, so.
Good morning, I'm Susie Berry. I've been on the board now for about 10 years and I'm the vice chair.
As I said, I'm Joe Pato, the board chair, and I've been a board member, this is my 12th year.
Coming in, my name is Doug Lucenti. I'm a member of the board for about eight years.
And I'm Mark Sandin, I'm on the board for five.
My name is Mike Gillette and I'm here on behalf of COHHR. I am a consultant that worked with COHHR on recruitments in New England. I've done work in, through, uh, three of the states in New England, uh, Maine, Vermont, no, or, uh, Maine, Vermont, Massachusetts, Connecticut, also done some work in Maryland. I am, uh, during, I, I, I've been in municipal government for 40 years. Retired in 2019. I've been enjoying COHHR, appointed by Glasser as the town administrator in Westwood, Massachusetts for 32 years. I've done, as I said, several recruitments, I've had a lot of success. Um, I, in Massachusetts, I worked in Wayland, Williamstown on their recruitments in Connecticut since 40 grand, most recently, Bangor, Maine, and Newuski, Vermont. Those were executive positions in the department as well. Uh, I also have recruited 38 years, uh, staff to work for me, so I've done a lot of departmental searches. Um, and my, my approach, my perspective was exactly the same as COHHR itself. It was a nice fit for me. I do a lot, I've done a lot of international work over my career, uh, starting on high school, long table, academy, college, etc. I really have a passion for international work. Just a little bit about me, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
So, so I'll start and I think you answered part of this question, uh, but we'd like to hear about your recent successful town manager recruitments, uh, that you and your firm did for a community that you deem similar to Lexington. Um, and also what efforts you made to ensure that there was a diverse pool for consideration.
Okay, so, uh, I, I, I do, uh, one that's very similar to, uh, here that I just finished recently was Simsbury, Connecticut. That was a search for, for a town manager as well. It's an, it's an affluent community. It's, it's got a lot of same characters. It was a very successful search. We left it in there in New York. Um, he applied, but he had done a lot of work, was chief financial officer in Hartford, Connecticut. Um, a great portion of his career, four moved to New York. He would, he was actually a chief administrative officer working for the mayor. Then the mayor left after he had won the election for state representative and he, he was next in line, uh, which is unusual, but yet the sheriff is a chief administrative officer as well as the mayor for the community. So that was a bit strange, but he was a very, very qualified candidate. To talk, to talk about diversity, um, my best stamp of diversity was in, uh, Newuski, Vermont. Newuski, if you know it, is a community that prides itself on, uh, on, uh, providing, uh, encouraging, uh, a lot of refugees to move there. It is the most diverse community in, in London, England. Um, so it has a lot of, uh, a lot of pride in, in fact, and it really did want a person, uh, from a minority group to be its next chief executive. Uh, they gave it that direction, uh, and they made significant effort to do that. I had, uh, we were able to identify the four finalists. One dropped off, actually, in the finalist group. One had, uh, the Hispanic background, one had Asian background, one had American background. And third, uh, did a lot of D I, D E I work, uh, various, uh, for fires and police, basically public safety, uh, departments. Uh, and those were the candidates that they selected, uh, and they selected one of those. She's, I, I've been in touch with her husband now, uh, probably six months, but she's doing very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's some trouble hearing, hearing, so maybe we can turn the mic on.
On the top, there's a slider.
Yeah, just slides toward you. I've been watching the, um, uh, text options, but if you could speak up a little bit more into the mic.
Is there a green light on the top of that now?
If you tap on the top of my.
Yeah, just, uh, just try speaking into it, we'll be able to tell.
Is this better?
All right, is that any, we're not getting any mics from any of them. So I was just asking you to speak up. The microphone's actually up here in the ceiling, the one that's picking up.
Okay. Well, I, I'll try to project a little bit better. I, I used to teach, so I'd be good at projecting.
Glad to draw on your skillset. Um, so what other town manager searches is your firm currently performing in Massachusetts or New England? And how will those recruitments, um, or other projects your firm has, is doing, have an ongoing impact on our recruitment timeline?
So, uh, that's to my knowledge, uh, I'm, I'm doing a recruitment right now in Connecticut, uh, but it's for, uh, our, our community, uh, it's a, uh, council of governments, um, in Connecticut. So it's a form, it's their form of regionalization. Uh, we are not currently doing any executive searches in, in Massachusetts at the moment, uh, so we will not be in conflict, uh, at all with, with, with what you're looking to do. I am, as I said, the person in New England, I don't take on more than two or three, uh, jobs at a time. And I do so, one, because I'm retired and I'm not interested in doing full-time work, but two, because I like to dedicate myself to the job that I, that I, the jobs that I have and give them a hundred percent of my, uh, that, my, uh, my time, uh, and effort, uh, so I can do a good job. I, I pride myself, uh, at the end of the day, working out, uh, a, a successful recruitment for someone that's going to, that's a good fit and that will be good for a, a good length of time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So could you tell us about the experience and qualifications of the staff who will be assigned for the Lexington recruitment? You told us a little bit about yourself, but what do you expect the breakdown to be of principals versus associates versus support staff that would be involved in the Lexington recruitment?
So the nice thing about our firm is we have 36 recruiters. Uh, we're a nationwide firm. Uh, we, we're working in 46 states or we've worked in 46 states. I think currently we're working 43. Uh, not, wow, that would say that we're working 43, but, um, because I, I know we're not working in all the states in New England. So, but we do work in 46 states. Uh, we did 230, I believe, recruit, executive recruitments in the last year. Uh, so we, we do a fair amount of work. We have a, a dedicated staff of, uh, people back in Illinois, who, uh, who back up all of the recruiters. And so we have specialists and people that do searches of, uh, the media, searches of, uh, social media, uh, that do background checks, that do, uh, evaluate, uh, preference checks on individuals. Uh, I will have a dedicated person with me that will assist me in all aspects of, of recruitment. Uh, when it comes to advertisement, I, I give them the advertisers and they handle that. Uh, when it comes time for me to identify potential candidates to, to email and to reach out to, uh, that person will assist me in that for God. Uh, the company itself has weekly meetings of the 36, uh, or whoever can attend, uh, recruiters. We talk about our recruitments. If someone's having a problem, uh, that gets identified and, uh, people assist. And, you know, I've, I've sent, uh, candidates that I, that haven't succeeded, but were really good in some of my recruitments, they notified my fellow recruiters of the individuals so they can reach out to them as potential candidates for their recruitments and the same happens to me. Uh, in addition to that, we have a job posting board that gets due by 10, roughly 10,000 people a month, uh, which is all of the postings that we have, uh, throughout the United States at any given time. And we also, uh, email to a good number, I think it's around 5,000 managers throughout the United States, information on, uh, on our postings. Uh, I think we do that on a weekly basis.
Thank you. Could you tell us a little bit about how your firm will recruit interested candidates, including individuals who may not be currently considering the Lexington division? And that we'd be interested in hearing about things beyond reaching out to ICMA and MMA, those type of things.
Yes, so that's a scene of practice. What I, what I do know from my experience, uh, I was town manager, as I said, I, I was town administrator, I, I worked 32 years in, in Westwood. That didn't mean that I didn't, uh, apply for other positions, uh, I decided not to take any other positions that I really liked doing and kind of had dedication to projects I was working on, so it ended up, I never took another position. However, I do know that I sat back in my office and just did my work, wound up my work. And the only times I made, I put in an application was when somebody called me up and said, hey, Mike, you know, I think you might be a good fit for this position. Uh, why don't you give, why don't you give it some thought? And on a couple of occasions, I, I took advantage of that, uh, and did make the application. So I do know that it, to get what I think you're looking for, and quite frankly, Lexington has had two of the best, the last two individuals they had in power, Jim. And, uh, this is, this is, uh, a job that most every manager in Massachusetts would aspire to. And so they're, they're, quite frankly, in my opinion, we, some individuals out there that would be really good matches for you, that might not be giving it a second thought at the moment because, um, they're probably engaged in whatever they're engaged in, they don't want to take the time or the risk. But if we, but I believe we reach out to them, uh, then they have a, a different team. And I'm, I'm judging that from, from the way I approach them.
So the question for me was, how would you do that?
I'd be in the call. I'd identify, uh, but I'd talk to Jim, uh, who's currently serving and ask him who thinks is out there that might be really good for here. Uh, I, I know a few people that I think are candidates, so I would personally reach out to them, uh, and have a conversation with them. So it'd be a phone call. Uh, that, and also sending out, uh, I find that sending out personal emails and encouraging people to, uh, give it some consideration, because I don't know everyone, so I don't, there may be, uh, broad-based candidates that, that are not familiar with, uh, I will send out emails. Uh, it's a very personally emailed to each individual, uh, and I encourage them to consider the position and, or. And or if the, if the timing's not right, I always encourage them to pass on to somebody that they think might be a good fit. And might be the point where they think about it.
So we're curious, what you would advise us in creating the best possible search screening committee from among the community members? In particular, are there experiences, criteria, particular qualifications that you think we should ensure are represented within the makeup of the committee?
My experience with search committees, and I'm going to highlight on one particular one that I've worked, it happened to be in Massachusetts as well. That, that, that search committee had, was comprised of former officials that had worked in the community. So they had, there was a former selectman that was on, on the board. There were a couple of former finance people that were on the board. And there were a couple of, I think there was a school, yes, there was a school person on the board. And there was just another general, general individual, I think the person was with personal, yeah, because of background. And so having those former officials who are familiar with the way town government works, to do the evaluation proved to be very good. That, that committee was highly energized, were very proud of what they did. And they, they came to the table with a, with a very good understanding of, of what they were looking for. And the former chair of the board that had been the chair of the board of selectmen was the chair of that committee. And that was particularly useful because she had a, she had a good sense of what the board needed.
Thank you.
So continuing along the line of, of talking about the search committee. What would you say would be the most important questions that the screening committee, search committee should ask a candidate? And then follow up to that, this is a bunch of questions. How would you advise that we gauge candidate's ability from responses? Work effectively with our state representatives, you know, our state house delegation. We have a very active citizenry here in town and to be able to lead a highly professional staff.
So I, I think that the first thing you need to do, and, and we, we will do that in the brochures, to basically identify what those qualities are and how Lexington operates. The fact that, for instance, that you have a very engaged citizenry, you know, in the Midwest, that's probably not going to be the case. I mean, it's not the way they operate out there. And so being very clear in the brochure that we produced of the type of candidate you're looking for. In screening for them, you know, one of the things about the questions, and I've developed this over time. So it's the last couple of recruitments that I've finally got to this point. I advise and, and write, help with the script. And we wrote a little, in the beginning, basically said to candidates, look, when you're answering these questions and are giving examples of accomplishments you've had. Please tell us about what your role was in the accomplishment position. There's no accomplishment that ever gets made by any individual, town manager or otherwise, in a community. It's made by the community, but the town manager can play a very important role in that. And so identifying and making them give you answers that clearly establish what they did. So you can assess, you know, how, how much impact they had. And then you just, I, in, in structuring questions, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit for that direct response to you. But here's, here's what I think I'd offer. In structuring questions, what I like to do, and I have a bunch of sample questions that I will give you, to take, the search committee. Share these sample questions in these various categories. So you have a personality, you have finance, you have citizen engagement, communication skill. And so in each of these categories, I have a set of questions that I say, these are standard questions that get asked. Please take one of these or tailor it to the community itself. To get the response or to get the, the response that will help you identify whether or not they're a good fit in your community.
Thank you.
Was there anything else you wanted to question that left out?
No, I think it was all there.
So do you think this select board should consider non-traditional candidates for this position? Former elected officials, like mayors in a different structure, or retired military command officers, chief executives from either nonprofits or from the private sector? What, what has been your experience with that route and how do you think it applies to Lexington?
So Lexington, here's, here's my view of Lexington, I've already indicated, and I'll repeat it. It's that there are a lot of experienced town managers in this Commonwealth, especially probably in other states. But in this state in particular, who are looking at Lexington, say, I'd love to work there. That, I, I do believe that. Communities where they, they look at non-traditional folks, primarily, primarily have communities not attracting people that are currently serving. Having to accept people from, from different roles. So I, I, that would be one observation I'd make. A sec, a second observation, however, I'll make is that, given the level of commitment you have for having some diversity in the, in your candidate pool. It may be advisable to be a little flexible on the absolute qualifications that you're looking for, the minimum qualifications. Especially to encourage those folks. Because if we're honest, that they may not have had the opportunities, equal to, it may not have been equal opportunities across the board. So I've had communities say that and do that in order to have a more diverse pool of candidates. But I'll be looking for you in the search committee to advise me as how.
Thank you.
So what would you advise other municipal clients regarding paying for travel expenses for the screening committee interview? Or for the select board interview for any candidates that are outside of Massachusetts? How would you advise us on whether we should pay or not pay for those travel expenses?
Standard, standard practices. Otherwise, it's not quite going to be interesting. You know, it, it, it's a gamble on their part to come out, they're putting themselves at risk to some extent. In having their name devolved and whatnot, bad feedback and that sort of thing. And it's just standard practice. I always tell people, be, be very reasonable, very cautious, do not, you know, so before they come out, make sure that they understand, they have limits. They don't want to embarrass themselves.
Thank you. So are there any aspects of the recruiting approach outlined in the RFQ that raise concerns for you? Or do you have any recommendations the board might want to reconsider?
No, I, I, I read through it and I felt, I felt comfortable with all aspects. It, it was a good match, the way we approached the job. In fact, I, I wondered whether or not you, you, in preparing the RFQ, would look at our, look at our standard practice or proposals. It, it is a pretty much a hundred percent match.
Okay, thank you. So sort of our final question is really, you know, why do you feel that you and your firm are really the right match for us for this particular recruitment now?
Ninety-four percent of the people that we end up doing business with, at the end of the day, say that we did an excellent job. So first off, I'd say that we are a very proud company. We're, the company was started up by two females. One used to work in Massachusetts, so she, she teamed up with somebody in Illinois. So that's how the firm got located in Illinois. That, it's a company made up of government professionals. So a lot of us are retired or just people shifting their career path from working for municipal government to working for, for HR on a full-time basis. Like we're all, thirty-six of us, all recruiters, are all former government, local government officials. We take great pride in that. You know, I devoted my entire career, as many I think of people in our firm have done. And it, and I'm including people at the staff level, coordinators and people like that, used to work, many of them worked in local government as well. We did it, we, we devoted our career, I know I did, because we really believe in it and want it, wanted it to succeed while we were working. And I want to continue that in helping a lot of true professionals. So we're dedicated to, to the, I spend some time at the end of each recruitment, talking to individuals that, that came close but didn't quite get there. About what they might do to improve or what, what extra qualification they might seek to improve themselves. I've helped some of them get placed, as I indicated to you, forward their names on to my fellow recruiters for consideration in their jobs. I try to follow up on really the stars that I see. Because at the end of the day, you know, it's not, the, the pool of people that rise to that top that you would want to consider for, for appointment. I would say that if you get two or three per recruitment, that, you know, get up there to the point where you want to appoint them. Out of fifty or sixty applicants you might receive. So it just didn't margin.
Thank you. And just a follow-up to one of the questions that was asked before about the particular staffing for this project. What I understood was that you will be the lead on this and then it's sort of a unspecified support staff. You don't have a particular known team.
What, what, what happens, because we have a lot of recruitments going on, at a, at a given time, they will assign a person to, to be my coordinator.
Yep.
Both these folks. So we have, in each category, we have folks. Now, Diane Doran, who I have, is the person that does background checks. So, you know, when it comes to that, she's the, she's the ones. Mara does all the brochure layouts and this wonderful job. She's a particular person that I know is going to work on this job. But there are others, like my coordinator, who I don't know. But, you know, it's been a wonderful experience with every single one of them. They, you know, at the end of the day, I always write back to all of them and tell them what happened and how. Because without them doing what they do, I would succeed out there. So I always, I always write back, you know, tell them who got appointed and, and how it all worked out and, and give them some feedback. I had an, I had an instance where there was a survey that got conducted, that, that, that we conducted after the, what I now do when, when we have the, the citizen engagement in the, in the final process. I now have a cert developer survey, a survey monkey, that I ask everybody to fill out on each of the candidates that are involved in that citizen meet session. And that, those results usually happen the night before. Those results are ready for you the next day to consider in your deliberation when you get to that point. And in that particular year, in that particular recruitment, the survey, it was the first time we used a survey tool. That survey was the difference when they were looking at one candidate to appoint. And then they got the feedback from the citizens and they really, this is a community that really wanted their citizen engagement. And the citizens reacted in, in a different manner than they were thinking and they went with the other candidate. And it's like, I, I remember applauding Nisi for having developed that survey because it made the difference in the way they.
Thank you. So that actually does relate to just one other specific thing based on the RFQ response, which was do things like those community engagement, listening sessions and things. Are, are those included in or are those add-on? I was a little confused. Okay.
They're included, they, they, the fine, the, here's the way to do that. Everything is all up for grabs. I mean, you will tell me what you want, but I'll give you all the options. But generally speaking, the final interviews is day one. Candidates are interviewed by the department heads. Candidates are, are, in some instances, interviewed by board, board members that want to come the session. And or a tour of the community to sell the candidate on the community. And a meet and greet session in the evening with community members or other stakeholders. You, you determine who should be invited. And, and in each one, a summary is made. I have surveys or I write up a summary, like for the department head, I'll write up a summary of what they said to me about each of the candidates. So you have the idea of how they're viewing each of the candidates. And then the second day is the day you conduct your interview. And then I give you that input of your two survey results. And I'll write, and I'll give you a written statement as to what, what the department had said about candidates.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Thank you. Mr. Sandin had a follow-up question. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about what is different today in terms of the recruiting environment today? As opposed to say, the last time the board went out to recruiting and how we, what recommendations you have? Or how recruiting should be done differently today than seven or eight years ago?
I think the biggest difference today over what it was, you know, several years ago, last time you were helping you hire Jim, is the field is narrowed even more. It, it's just, it's tougher. In Massachusetts in particular, because I was part of that group, we all came in together. There was a state grant that gave, gave monies to cities and towns that would go to professional management. And a number of companies took advantage of that, I being a recipient of that in Bellingham. That's how I got started in this career. When you all start together, means you're all going to come together. That's pretty much what happened. And Jim was, Jim's kind of at the tail end of that era. But that, that, that's the, that's the pool you have in Massachusetts. The advantage I think that we have is that we have a national reputation and can also bring in folks from out of state that may have caliber of experience.
Thank you. So colleagues, any, in which case?
Is there anything else you wanted to just make sure we heard from you or do you have any questions for us?
Mike, I don't have any questions because it's pretty straightforward. Again, you know, I think you can match up. If I haven't left you with the impression already, I would be thrilled to take this job. And I'd be very, very proud to, to work with you all. I, I guarantee you, I'll give it everything I got so you have a very good outcome. I'd like to follow that up with the caliber of the two, two town managers you previously had, because those guys were excellent. And I consider them friends as well.
So thank you. So we are concluding this portion. So the board will go into recess again until ten-thirty.
We do plan to deliberate today, so we will be in touch.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kim, just wanted to make sure that you're all set.
All set. Thank you.
Right, thank you. So I call the board back into session out of recess. I'm Joe Pato, the board chair. We're going to have Ms. Hay, who is the board's designated to lead this process, take control of the meeting. And we will each introduce ourselves, let you know who we are and ask you to introduce yourself and then get to our questions. So Ms. Hay.
Thank you. So thank you. Thank you for being here this morning. We're excited to have this conversation. My name is Jill Hay. I've been a member of the board for six years. And I realized I didn't say this earlier. My background, I actually am a labor and employment attorney and HR director in my prior professional life. And the format this morning is going to be just that we're each going to introduce ourselves. I'm going to ask you to introduce yourself. We have about ten questions, so two, three-minute answers if you can. And then we'll have a few minutes for any other questions you have for us or if we have any little bits of follow-up or anything like that. So that's kind of the plan. And I will now turn it over to Ms. Barry.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Suzy Barry. I'm the current vice chair for the board and I've been on the board about ten years. Nice to meet you.
And I'm Joe Pato, the current chair. And I've been on the board for twelve years and looking forward to a long duration.
Thank you for coming in. Doug Lucetti, I'm one of the members of the board and I've been on the board for, this is my eighth year.
And I'm Mark Sandina and I've been on the board for five years.
My name's Catherine Tuck Parish. I'm vice president at Rocktalis. We are a firm that helps public utilities and local governments and I lead our executive services department.
Thank you. Joe, I think you're leaving.
So I'll start off and we will rotate. So if you could tell us about the two most recent successful town manager searches that you and your firm have conducted for a community that you see as a peer or similar to Lexington? And what efforts you've made to make sure that there was a diverse candidate pool in that process?
Great. Thank you for that question and thank you all for letting me be here in person. First, I recognize there's a difference between town and city and that has a big difference in, but that does not necessarily mean that the towns I have worked in have matched your town. So I'm going to give you two examples. One is the town of Hanover in New Hampshire. And this was during the pandemic, as a matter of fact. There was COVID in the room, though we all had masks and everything. So that was a very successful recruitment, but it was a difficult one because it is a more remote community. And it's an expensive place to live, similar to here. And it was also, you know, not in a metro area, which is a little different, of course. Diversity was very important to them. It's very hard to get diverse candidates there in all candor. So we, and I will tell you a little bit more about how we do some of our recruitment. But I think there are some similarities between Hanover and here. And then, of course, there are a number of differences. It has a town meeting form of government. You all are representative of town meetings, so that's a little different. But many of the same types of expectations of the community in terms of engagement and interest in the position. Certainly a very well-educated community, similar to you all. That recruitment, we focused on women and minorities as we always do. What we, it did not result in a person of color being selected. So I will just let you know that. It ended up also being a male. The town manager had been a female, a Caucasian female, long-term town manager. And we had a number of candidates, one of which was one minority and one person of color, but they, excuse me, one female. They did not, they withdrew sort of in the process. This is something we've been facing over the next five years. A lot of, a lot more withdrawals than normal. And with the cost of housing, that is a complicating factor now with interest rates, et cetera. Another one that's a city that I would say is significantly, you have more in common. I'm actually doing a city manager recruitment currently in the city of Rockville, Maryland. But I'm going to use Gaithersburg because we're in process in Rockville. Gaithersburg is generally named the number one most diverse community in the country. And it has, you know, diversity of age, diversity of income, racial diversity and ethnic diversity. Many recent immigrants, many longtime residents who are immigrants and multiple languages that are spoken there. And in that recruitment, the successful candidate was an African-American female. She was very drawn to being in a very diverse community. That was really important to her. And she appreciated how the, I think all of our finalists actually were people of color there. And very drawn to the community's embracing of those values. It was very important to her that she was in a place that, you know, shared her values. And I think that is something that people who will be attracted to Lexington, that will be important to them as well. I would say that recruiting folks to come to the DC metro area and the Boston metro area, there are some similarities. They're not all the same, but there are a lot of similarities. And I've done probably, I should have counted the number, maybe forty, fifty in the metro area, the kind of the greater metro area, mid-Atlantic. I've done about ten in New England, so not as many. But I feel we've, our firm has done a ton of work in this area. And one of the things that we do to recruit people of color and other underrepresented groups is we have a tremendous network. So of course, we're placing ads in lots of places. There's a new organization for Asian Pacific American local government folks and that has been a big gap. And particularly east coast recruitment, it's easier on the west coast. So we do targeted outreach and we utilize our networks. One of my colleagues is very active in NFBPA. She leads recruitments for us. We have folks that have been active in Hispanic Network. And hopefully in the future, we will have colleagues that are active in INAPA. We also reach out through clients, not to steal their people. But because we've done so many organizational assessments and grade studies, we have a NADIC office. We have done a lot of strategic planning in the Commonwealth. And so we would utilize those folks to point us to sometimes folks that might not be looking but might be a good match. And so that, those are some of the ways, in addition to our traditional kind of postings. Mostly we do direct outreach, though.
Thank you.
Thank you. So what are the town manager searches? Is your firm currently performing in Mass or New England? And how are those recruitments or other projects that your firm has going on now going to impact our recruitment and our timeline?
We do not have any in New England or Massachusetts, short answer. So they will not impact, there will be no competition from, you know, folks being in multiple recruitments with us.
And timeline, if you could just address our timeline.
Yes, I did look at that very, I love how you've got dates in there. It's complicated because, of course, we get those dates, but we have no idea if we'll be selected. So it's hard to turn on a dime when we've already got, you know, other clients sort of scheduled. But we will do our best to meet that timeline. And I think if there's a little flexibility on some of the actual dates, that might work for us.
Thank you.
Could you tell us a little bit about the experience and qualifications of the staff you will have assigned to this recruitment? And what would be the expected breakdown of principals versus associates versus supports?
So if we were to do this recruitment, I would be the lead recruiter. And I have about, not just shy of twenty years in local government directly and about fifteen years of consulting experience, starting up an executive search practice with another firm before we joined Rocktalis. I would, I do about two-thirds to three-fourths of the hours. We utilize our recruitment specialists to do research. They help with our outreach, our targeted outreach. They help with drafting brochures. They help with references. They do media research on applicants. So more behind the scenes, they are also reviewing every application, as am I, unless they don't meet the minimum qual, you know, they have zero local government experience and are just very ambitious folks that want to work in Lexington. So my, my interaction would be with you all. My interaction would be with candidates. My interaction would be with prospective candidates.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you touched a little bit on this already, but if you could just elaborate a bit on how you actually go about recruiting with that mind towards the diverse pool we're looking for, you know, beyond the ICMA, the MMA, sort of typical resources.
So in every recruitment, whether they say diversity, equity and inclusion is important to them or not, we recommend that people reach out to people of color and women and other underrepresented groups. So we always advertise in NFBPA. That is the best source for African-American candidates. They may belong to ICMA, but they may have to pick one. And if so, they may be more active in NFBPA. And sometimes folks come through NFBPA and then get into city management, town management. So that's, that's one source. LGHN is the Hispanic Network. That organization is not quite as strong nationally as NFBPA. It's just not been around as long as NFBPA. We always advertise there. And then the new organization, which is not accepting advertisements as of yet, but what we've done in other cases is we contact kind of the chair of that organization and ask, you know, if we can find any board members, ask if there's a way that they can share it with their network. One of the organizations that we've been involved with almost since its founding is ELGL. It is a local government umbrella organization and it tends to catch people earlier in their careers that may be in different departments across local governments. And it's very grassroots. And so it helps us get a different generation. And sometimes we get through some of the more traditional associations. So that is another group that we reach out to. That's where we place our ads and we work through, we're, you know, we try to serve on committees and be engaged in those organizations. But what we, what you need to do to find the best qualified people of color and other underrepresented groups is you have to reach out directly. They're in high demand and they're assessing you all as well. And so they're looking to see what is the diversity. Besides what it says in the census, you know, what is the makeup of the organization I'm going to be joining? You know, that, that is important to them. And so we try to make sure that we can provide information about that in our preliminary conversations with the screening committee and the staff. You know, we're trying to learn more about some of the things that you have that, in addition to some of your ordinances, you know, what makes it a good place to be? And we try to describe that as in our brochures, but also in our conversations with folks. I have had multiple candidate, prospective candidates, conversations asking about if that community is really ready for something that they haven't had before, maybe? And so we have kind of candid conversations about that. And I think this would be a place that would be very welcoming, so. Thank you.
So how would you advise the board to ensure that we put together the best possible search screening committee? What characteristics, experiences or criteria do you think would be particularly useful that we ensure are represented on that committee?
Okay. Didn't you already put that group, you just, you just put the framework together? Not the people. Okay, sorry. So I'm pretty candid. So I think it's important that people understand what town manager does. And very smart people that live in your community, that are very engaged, might or might not know what the town manager does. So I think that is an important either expectation or onboarding process for that group. Maybe that would be part of my job if I get the chance to work with you to help them with that. So I think they need to understand what the job is because frequently they'll think it's the chair of the select or, you know, it's a select board member. And so I think distinguishing between those important functions is important. I think it's also helpful and important that they are representative of your community, not just geographically, although I know that can be very important, but also age-wise. I find many groups that I'm working with, not this group, but many groups that I'm working with, they're not really so representative of the age cohort in the community or the committees are not always as representative. So I think that's an important component because there are different viewpoints about just work and expectations. And if you want to have candidates that might be from different generations, it's helpful to have those folks sort of evaluating that. I think about a group I worked with where they were, probably the average age was seventy. And they had a real issue, they did not understand what the impact of student debt was. This was probably ten years ago when it was just happening. And so there was a lot of education that I had to do about why that is just very different from their generation. So work-life balance, all of those things, you know, all of those things. The other thing I think is that they are, they can keep information confidential. You know, it's, it's, they may be very well-connected. Folks like, you know, that are interested in things like this, sometimes they're very well-connected. And if you have local candidates, then, which I'm sure you will, it's important that they, they can keep that information confidential and see the importance of that for ensuring a fair process for everyone who's called. So those are some of the things that I think are important. I'm sure you all would have some other criteria that might be important, but those are the ones that come to mind initially.
Thank you.
Thank you. So what do you think are the most important questions that such a screening committee would ask a candidate? And how would you advise us engaging the ability of a candidate to work effectively with our state? And how would you advise us engaging the ability of a candidate to work effectively with our state representative delegation? With collaboratively with our very active citizenry and lead a highly professional staff? So how do we get our search committee to focus on that and then extract that from the candidate's effect?
I'm going to get to those quite, a few ideas in a minute. But before they have to narrow that group down and determine who they'd like to interview. I would have already had an interview with those folks and provided them with a written. Description of sort of what, how they answered. And in my questions, I try to get at all those things. This is not a. The best places to live are not always the easiest places to manage.
Well said.
And so you want someone who's attracted to that and understands that. And so, and is not. Is not going to be deterred by that or surprised. So part of, part of our job is to really clarify the expectations of the internal organization. The selectmen, select board, or I know you changed your language, I'm working on it. And the, the community at large and boards and commissions and, you know, all of the groups that interact. Both individually and as groups. So I think they're very different questions that you would ask. My, I personally think it's significantly more helpful to hear what people have done. Than to hear what their philosophy is. Because I have a lot of philosophies about what I should do in the morning. But if you ask me what I actually did in the morning, it might not match my philosophy. So I think those, those kinds of questions are helpful. One of the things that I always have in communities like yours, like where I live, like where I've worked. In many of the communities that we serve is, you know, what's the most controversial project they've worked on and why was it? And what was their role? You know, how did they build consensus on a, on a difficult issue? Not getting to 100%, but you know, what was their role? And maybe they were building, helping the select board build consensus. Maybe they're working with the neighborhood to build consensus around a project. Maybe they're working with the staff on an issue that needs help building consensus. And I think understanding how, how the form of government works. And what it, how it's intended to work and how the town manager can best support that.
Thank you.
So do you think the select board should consider non-traditional candidates such as a former elected official such as a mayor? Or perhaps a retired military officer or a CEO in a nonprofit as examples? What do you think of that philosophy?
So what I think might be interesting, but it's much more important than you all think. Because I'm, I, but I will tell you, I, this will sure take me out of the running. But I do have concerns sometimes when I see folks who have been elected officials and are wanting to immediately make that transition. Into a local, leading a local government staff for the first time. Because I, I would also, I am also cautious and suspicious maybe of town managers. That retire and then want to run for office. So I, I feel like there, you need to make sure that people understand what that role is. There are many elected officials who are now serving in local governments. But I wouldn't want you to be the first place that they learn that. I, I think it's helpful to, but that's, that's my opinion. It's not a fact, it's just my opinion. And so I think it's important that you all clarify what your expectations are. One of the things that I bring to, and I guess would be the selection committee. Would be, let's clarify what meets requirements and what preferred requirements are. So it's very clear so that if it's. I, I want to send a very clear message to candidates and prospective candidates about how they're going to be sorted. I don't want that to be a surprise, I want that to be known. So I've worked with lots of, I, I know a number of elected officials who have made that transition very well. But I've also met some that maybe thought they could, thought they had already done it, but they had served in a different role in a legislative role. Rather than an administrative CEO sort of role. Nonprofits of CEOs, former military, many of those have made that transition. There's a whole program at ICMA that encourages and helps. Helps find transitional sort of almost internships and other positions for former military. Former military is a really broad concept. So I would be looking for people that have, that have run operations. Again, you know, you want to make sure that they can do the job and it's not their first time. This is a place that's complicated and has high expectations. And so you just want to make sure that they understand your form of government and, and again, their role in it. Nonprofit CEOs, similarly, they maybe are the most equipped because they've worked for a board. But the complexity and the variety of services that you deliver every day are really hard to match. With almost even in private sector unless they're definitely out of the price range for wanting this transition.
Thank you so much.
So what have you advised other municipal clients regarding paying for travel expenses for search committee interviews? For select board interviews and for candidates who are traveling from outside of Massachusetts?
So what, what direction do I give the candidates that are, okay. Well, it's actually a question that I some.
Actually, what direction do you give clients?
Oh, okay. Well, I encourage any client, small, large, affluent, not. That if they're going to advertise nationally, they need to be willing to pay for the travel expenses of folks who are coming in person. That is the expectation. This is, this is not the time to save $500. This is the time to use that, you know, have that interaction with folks. I do though, remind candidates that they are spending public dollars that they will be reimbursed from. And so, you know, I do want them to be frugal. They make their own travel arrangements, it's 2024. But you know, we, I do give any guidance that the town has for what is okay and what isn't. So it's very clear. We also generally do virtual interviews first as a, and that is a way that saves not only the town money. But it saves the candidates. It, it keeps more people in the process because they don't have to explain why they're going to be gone if they're traveling. Even if they're local and they have to take the day off of work to come to an interview. It allows you to kind of hook them in after that first interview.
Thank you. So are there any elements that we outlined in the RFQ for this process that you would recommend we change, eliminate, adapt?
I would just, this is actually one of my questions maybe is understanding. As I understand it, a couple of select board members will be on the selection committee. I think it's really important that the whole select board feels ownership of the hiring decision. And I have had examples where there was. A disconnect between the group that was reviewing and kind of making recommendations. So once we got to the finalist phase. So one of the things that I always like to ask is how will the full select board be kept abreast? I, I generally would want to talk to each select board member upfront. And I usually have sort of that conversation with them, so that may be it. But also, you know, how, how will, how will the. This is kind of worst case scenario planning, you know. That you get to the finalists that have been recommended and the select board says. This is it? How did you get here? Why don't you have this or that or the other, you know? So what is the way, best way to educate and keep them informed in a way that responds to what fits your needs? You did this for a reason, I know you did it in 2018. So that, you know, I'm not saying it's not the right process, but just making sure that there's not a disconnect later. The example I gave, it was a large board. And so I think that was part of the, you're, you're not a large board. It'd be a lot easier to keep everyone informed in a way that makes sense. And I think a couple of you will be on it. So, but that would be just sort of a question that I have about. Ensuring I am clear on what their role is and where it ends and that they are clear on that as well.
So I think that's actually a fair point. And I think under open meeting law for Massachusetts is a reason only two of us can be on it. But the expectation would be that probably every, at least every other week or so. I would probably do an update to the board as part of, we do member announcements, liaison reports at each meeting. And depending on the pace of things, there would be sort of a, while keeping confidentiality, at least a specific, you know. Broadly framed update. But to the extent that it was necessary, open meeting law would allow you.
Yes.
Or the consultant to talk individually to members so that, you know, both of those avenues would be the answer to your question.
Thank you.
So, thank you. And as far as the timeline, I did see, you know, we, we are hoping, so our current town manager is retiring effective September 30th. And we were hoping for enough time between selection and his retirement to allow whoever is selected to give notice and be here pretty close to seamless transition. I did notice on your timeline, it sort of did stretch a little into September. And as the person who created all those dates and answered your question at the beginning, yes, those are my best guesses. None of them are written in stone. But, you know, do you think that it's an adequate amount of time to get somebody in place so that we could have, you know, an appropriate and respectful notice given? To wherever they're leaving and still have that seamless transition for October 1?
Hopefully. So the things that get in the way of schedule, what we do, what I'll do at the very beginning. After I've had my conversations and is develop a recruitment plan that kind of outlines all those dates. And I set that at the beginning so that everyone, we make sure the dates work for everyone. And then including the selection committee. So just that part I think is pretty important. Sometimes the hardest thing is to find the dates that work. So we do that really early. The things that we can't control is when people's vacations are all askew and it blocks it three weeks this way or that direction. So that's another reason why I try to do that. 16 weeks from the date we begin, you know, talking with folks is not unachievable. It's just that there's no contract yet, you know, you haven't made a decision yet, you know. So it's all about kind of how quickly those decisions can be made. And then I dates early on might be a more tricky. Just because I've got current clients and have made arrangements. So I may have like a narrow or timeframe that I can provide initially versus later on where I'll have a lot more flexibility. The other thing that of course, I know you know this, but. So you make it, you make a decision, you have consensus, you, then you negotiate an employment agreement. And then you have to adopt it. And then they give their notice, which is generally 60 days. But I've seen 90 days, although I've never had a candidate have to stay 90 days. And then of course, the candidate may have a series of things happening. So I always say that from the time, it's, it's plus 60 at least from the date that you make the decision. And that's assuming that the negotiations go quickly and the employment agreement gets adopted quickly. And, you know, sometimes there has to be a special meeting for that. So. Those are the things that I would want to make sure we had sort of plotted out so that we could clarify that. And then I always share all those dates with folks that we're talking with. So they have them as well. Had a candidate recently, you know, take her laptop to Portugal so she could participate in a virtual. And, and you know, appropriate clothing for Zoom. To, to participate. And so, you know, just making sure that it's, it's not just the selection committee, it's not just us, it's also the candidates. And so clarifying that.
Thank you.
So we're almost out of time. Is there anything else that you'd like to add or share with us?
I would just like to say that this is my passion. This is not my, this, I chose to do this and start this. With Novak Consulting and then join, joining Rough Tellus about four years ago. Because I felt like there were not enough women and people of color in the top chair. And while we don't select those people and it would be inappropriate for us to, it's the local government that needs to do that. It's really hard to do that if you don't have any choices. And so if I can bring the best options possible, then I feel like that is, helps improve our. Representation in our communities, which is important to me. The other thing I would say is that this is not an easy environment to do recruitments. In the 15 years I've been doing it, 12, 14 years. It is, it's, it's tough because it's very expensive for people to relocate right now. And it's, it's. There are also a lot of national polarization issues that are impacting and getting into local governments. And that is a hard environment and there aren't as many literally people. In the generations after those that are now retiring. So that's just math and that's not local government. But if you look back at the recession, there were a lot of theater positions that were cut. In those recession years that were not added back. And so it's just kind of exacerbated that. So I think it's important, no matter who you select, that you are, you do everything you can to make this an attractive position. Not just on paper, but when they get here. And you all will have a huge role in their success. And I just encourage you to, you know, form a good partnership with whomever you select in that position.
Thank you.
Martin. You said, just your last sentence there was do everything you can to make this an attractive position. Could you just elaborate a little bit on that?
Salary, relocation, housing assistance. And I mean that, you know, so it's like everyone has their math equation, they're not gonna, they're not doing, they're not going to come for less. And it's risky to go from where they already are to go to a new place where they haven't been. So they have to have whatever that math equation is for them for the risk factor. And then, you know, just how you set up the onboarding process for the person so that they can learn. What your norms are, what your community expectations are more than just watching and reading. watching and reading, you know, they have to learn that and you, you have to have some patience, particularly the first year, to allow them to learn that and also to be open to maybe at the end of that year, some tweaks they might suggest, you know, you're, you're kind of hiring them for some of their expertise, but they can't really apply that until they understand how things work now, which seems like they're very well. So I think those are some of the some of the things, some on the financial side, and then also what's it like to work here? What is the environment? Do you text them at eleven PM on Saturday and expect to hear from them? You know, things, I know you don't do that, but there, there are expectations and whatever they are, they should be sort of negotiated or renegotiated.
So I just, to follow up on that point, you talk a lot about, you know, sort of making sure that they, the contract negotiations, the salary, the onboarding, all of this. In the RFQ response itself, it says, you know, we can assist in all those things. So do I take that, that that is not included in this proposal or it's? It is. It's just if we want to engage it. Got it. Okay.
There are, I have learned that in some cases, there is, you know, someone, an attorney that wants to do that. I'm, I'm not an attorney. So I'm, Nora would I be yours? So, but um, I like to stay engaged throughout the process. I took a call as we were uh, just getting off the plane from um, process that we concluded on Friday, Friday. And we did the negotiations over the weekend, kind of, I get to, I get you all to deal points where I kind of think of it. And then um, turn that over to your attorney to put that into an agreement. But then I stay engaged throughout the process because I want to, until they're appointed, the job is not finished.
Thank you. That's helpful.
So, so I do have one follow up question and you, you may have covered it and I might have missed it. So um, fairly comfortable with understanding your national presence. Can you tell us a little bit more about your insight into the existing pool of senior managers in Massachusetts?
So um, there are a number of states that your case Commonwealth, I work in another one next door. Where there are not nearly enough assistant and deputies to fill the town manager and manager roles that you have with the aging workforce. But Massachusetts has more assistance than almost anywhere else. It's, yeah, anywhere else in New England. So, and um, I think it's going to be an attractive position. I think the our work from organizational assessments and strategic planning in the area, which done police reviews and uh, my colleague Julia has worked with you all before. We've done work in, probably have six or eight jurisdictions in the Boston area that we've recently done work with. So um, do I know every person that is in Massachusetts? I do not. I don't know every person in Virginia, Maryland, or anywhere else either. And in some ways that can, I don't have, uh, I'm evaluating people based on what I see on paper at my conversations and what I know, what I, what I can see of their work online, et cetera, as opposed to although I certainly do have some colleagues from Massachusetts. But I think you, you are better equipped than certainly the other, you know, than New York, where I've done work, in Hampshire, where I've done, where Connecticut, where I've done work. You have way more depth in your benches here than in those other, those are states.
Thank you.
Unless you have anything else for us?
No, just thank you so much for letting me talk with you. I hope I get the chance to work with you, but regardless, I, I wish you the best. It's a great community. So I know it will attract good candidates.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we are planning to deliberate today, so we'll be in touch.
Great.
Quickly.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
So colleagues, um, would you like a five minute break to resume? We are scheduled to be at eleven fifteen. So let's be in our seats and ready to go eleven fifteen. Thank you.
You want to check your word adjourned?
The only
I hope we will adjourn by noon.
The only thing I'm waiting to see.
So we are in recess. All right. So we are coming out of uh, uh, recess at eleven twenty-two. The um, what I'd like to say is we're, we're coming now to item number two on our agenda, which is for the board to reflect on what we heard and to, I hope, select a firm based on these candidates. I would say that we have a third item on our agenda, which is to review the screening committee point of process and uh, criteria, which is also on our agenda for later this evening. So I, I suspect we will at best put that very short this morning.
Yeah.
All right. So Ms. Hay, if you would uh, lead us through.
So um, obviously I think all three of these groups are qualified. I have been able to get at least one reference check on the first two, I have not heard back from any of the messages that I left, but to be fair, I left them all on Friday on our third um, firm, because I was not able to, whatever. Anyway, so I haven't heard back, but um, you know, there's uh, I think there's a fair amount of information, given just even the number of references that are on each of the three. And we have worked with MRI ourselves in the past as well.
Is that the one that you don't have references?
No, Raff tell us is the one that I haven't heard back on. I just was getting, that's why I was out. I apologize. Um, I just heard back on the Gov HR, no, on the MRI, sorry. Plus we have one ourselves on MRI. I did speak with the chair um, of the select board or um, a town that Gov HR did, uh, town manager search, town administrator, maybe, um, slightly different, but within Massachusetts. And so I've heard nothing, nothing negative in either case. Both um, communities that I heard from have very good things to say about working with the responsiveness, the efforts, the professionalism. Um, I think that the experience that we had about the diversity of the pool has been echoed in what I've heard from, you know, the references on the other, uh, on the MRI and on Gov HR as well. Um, and I will say that um, in addition to our putting it as a priority, I have been told that um, apparently there was a conversation with the planning board last week when they were discussing who was going to be their nominee to the committee itself, that there had been disappointment in, because apparently there are two different members of the current planning board who served on that last committee, um, who expressed dissatisfaction in the diversity of the pool and that they really hope we will work hard to make sure that it is a broader diversity representation um, this time. So, you know, that's sort of the extenuating piece. I mean, obviously there is a cost differential um, between the three, but I think that there is a significant, if my read is that there is a significant difference in the um, the responses to the DEI emphasis that we have said is one of our priorities and we have put into the RFQ. So, and Liz is in the room. She can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that we could say that that truly is a differentiating qualification. Um, and that it, you know, one firm is, if we decide that, one firm is more qualified on one of our requirements. That I think that that we could be justified in making that a selection criteria. Um, is that right? Okay, thank you. So that's, you know, that's sort of my summary. I don't know what people's thoughts are if we want to go to that.
So I think we should get thoughts from everybody. I know Ms. Barry has her hand up for a second. I'll go to you in a second, but I do want to make sure we're all prepared to offer some feedback. Ms. Barry?
So just to clarify a few things, the references that you called, are they references from searches that were done, I'll say, since 2022? So more post pandemic than prior pandemic?
So the um, the Gov HR rec, uh, reference actually ended up being done twice. It was twenty-one and, twenty and twenty-two or twenty-one and twenty-two. I forget which, because the first panel that was brought forward, the board couldn't make a choice on, didn't. And so Gov HR repeated the, this process for them and brought them a different panel and they did make a selection with whom they're very happy. So that was just before and then during um, the pandemic and then a little post. So sort of all through the stages. Um, and the MRI reference, the town manager search was just pre-pandemic, but they have continued to work on them with several other, both other position searches and some other projects in town. So, and that went through just even this year. So.
Okay. I mean, I'd be more comfortable if we were kind of comparing apples and apples.
Right.
Because we did hear how the pool is significantly different now, not only as people are aging, but post pandemic and some people who maybe weren't going to leave the profession, have left the profession. So that would be one thing um, to hear. But um, clarify for me a little bit more, your comment about diversity and that one of them had more diversity or could address diversity more. Are you talking about in terms of the makeup of their group that would be working on this? Or are you talking about how they go out to find diverse candidates or both?
So mostly I'm talking about the process. I mean, I think the, um, so MRI gave us their full team. The other two, it's essentially the one principal and somebody who will be behind scenes. So on a very basic level, one of them is giving us a woman, the other two are giving us men. So there's a little bit of diversity differential there, but that's not exactly what we all were talking about when we talked about diversity. So what I was really talking about was the methods um, that they use, their familiarity, their depth of um, outreach into specific communities beyond sort of the, let's use the phrase usual suspects, not in a negative way, but just sort of in a, in a plain face language. And I think that 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 both the experience and by the way, I will also say that our specific question in the RFQ was give us the breakdown of your um, pool and your experience with recruiting a diverse pool. And only one of these firms did that in their materials. And that was Raff tell us.
So.
And let me just ask one question, because I, I hear you, Ms. Barry, and I don't disagree and I apologize that I didn't have the bandwidth to get to everybody and all of the other, you know, I struggled a little getting through to some of these. And I was trying to do it in a person interview, not just leaving messages. We could, if we needed to, since we may well be having a short meeting on Wednesday, we could extend and make the decision after I have better luck completing some more reference calls, if you want.
Right. So, so let's have this conversation, knowing that at any time we choose to table and continue the discussion. I, I, I do know our schedules are very tight, so if we can get tonight, today, we could.
Do you want to hear my thoughts? Or you just, my, my clarify, that was just my?
No, no, yeah, I'm happy to.
Oh, okay. So my thoughts are I think all three of them are very capable of doing the search. Um, I think their approaches are somewhat similar. None of them seem surprised at the timeline. I think just the interactions with the last consultant were um, very genuine. And I think it's just a different approach to how, how she engages with people. And very honest about your, your timeline is pretty aggressive. And, and thinking back about it, when she talked about the timeline and how long to negotiate everything, our negotiation last time did go very quickly. And that's, I think, because of the situation that particular person was in. That they were, you know, they were already looking, so they were prepared to go. If we have a candidate who maybe isn't looking but gets recruited into looking at us, it might lengthen that. Um, so I think there's just, for me, it would come down to small nuances between them in terms of if, and this is where I kind of want to hear about um, references for a more recent recruitment, is if the pool is really significantly different in terms of the number of people who are still out there. Um, so that's the pandemic. Does it make a difference if you are locally based and if you are connected? Because we have some people who are very, very wired in and we have some people who aren't. And I think, I know they all say Lexington is a very, very desirable community. Everybody's going to want to come here. But I will tell you, six years ago, there were people we expected to be on that list that were not um, for a whole host of different reasons. Um, so that's, that's kind of where my thinking is at right now, but I want to hear the rest of you.
And
Good. So do I.
Can I, can I just follow up with one thing? That is actually a, a question that I've asked the, the two people with whom I've had personal conversations. Do you feel that um, the locally based consultant makes a difference, given what we're looking to do? And the answer I got both times was no. Interestingly enough, that the, the contacts are, um, well, both of them said actually somewhat similar to what the consultant said, people who want Lexington, want Lexington. They're going to see that, they're going to come. It's going to probably have national interest. Um, but some amount of the recruiting is going to be done by cold calling anyway. Um, and outreach, and as long as they're capable of doing that, it doesn't matter whether they're based here or not. So I thought that was interesting. They both said that.
So uh, i- if you'd like to jump in first, you're welcome. Otherwise I'll go ahead. So I agree with both of you in saying that all of these firms are well qualified. There clearly were personality differences and, and stylistic differences. But there, I think they all would do well for us. I was more impressed with Raff tell us than I thought I was going to be. And I do agree that with respect to answering our questions on diversity, they prepared the most complete reference there. What has me the most concerned though, was the follow up question I posed that day. Which was really, what was the network that they have inside Massachusetts? Not that they work here or not, but what is their awareness of the potential pool and how will they shake the bushes? Everyone can shake the bushes in the indirect national way. It's the contact and the network. And that leaves me worried because I think all of them rightfully said, this situation is more difficult than it was. So it's five years ago, certainly more than it was fifteen or twenty years ago, that the cohort of the senior managers has largely left and the, who we have coming up is going to be more difficult to pull and they've had more options. So you know, not to, so that is my word with them. Otherwise, based on the discussion, I probably would have chose them as my top pick. And I could still be convinced, right? But, but it is for me, a really significant concern. The other two were clearly more traditional in the way they spoke with us. Even though Gov HR is not, uh, like neither of them are, are Massachusetts firms. I think the, the representative from Gov HR is a Massachusetts presence and has a good network. And I, in some ways felt the way he spoke of um, our, to our diversity questions to be a little more aligned with uh, the way we talk. Not not at the level that I heard from Raff tell us, which felt much more in line. But of the other two, he was slightly more in sync. So at the moment, I find that probably a little bit better for going forward for us. I did find that MRI's responses actually were stronger than the experience we had six years ago. So I think they would be a perfectly fine uh, uh, firm for us to hire. And, and, and willing to hear more from the board, but I wanted to make sure that, you know, my hot buttons, or at least the, the concerns were aired and then we can all talk about that.
So for me, I'll concur with everybody that all three, if I left this room and one of the three were selected, I don't think I would be frustrated or disappointed or anything. I don't think I would be frustrated or disappointed or anything. I think all three can do the job. I think what it comes down to is actually something that Catherine's from Raff, Raff Tellus said, which was us clarifying what the requirements are versus what the preferred qualifications are. Requirements versus preferences. At the end of the day, if we as a board want diversity, but we set up our qualifications versus our requirements in a particular way, we're not getting the diversity. So in a roundabout way, if our board is looking for more stringent requirements, I would be more comfortable with MRI or GovHR. I think if we're going to go with things that can be more preferences, I'd be more comfortable going with Raff Tellus. And it's simply because of the, what, what Joe just said about the depth of the contacts. Because if we're going with more solid requirements, we want someone that can pick up the phone and say, hey, X, Y, Z, you know, I'm calling about this job. And they'll pick the phone up on the other end because they know who they are. You know, if a stranger's doing that, it might not, they may not pick up that phone or they may not, um, respond. So, so I'm of the opinion that we need, we need to sort of make some decisions on requirements. And, and that, that can help guide me, at least in this decision. I was very impressed with Raff Tellus as well. Um, I think they will do the extra work to get a pool that we haven't seen maybe in the past. And I think that, that would be great. I just don't want us to then make the pool shrink because they aren't from Massachusetts, for example, right? I think we, we talked at one of our meetings recently. You know, do we want someone who has Massachusetts municipal experience versus anywhere around the country? And we all sat here and said Massachusetts would be the most likely what we're looking for. So that, again, that limits our pool right away. So I think it's just a direction thing we have to decide on and who to partner with to get in that right direction. Thank you.
Same. So, um, we've been spending a lot of time talking about timing and, um, we heard from two firms that said, we're fine with your timing. We heard another firm that said, this might be tight. And that was the last firm. So for, to me, I, I was feeling like I, I wanted to ask a follow-up question of all three firms, which is, are we, are we going to get better candidates if we allow them? I know we have reasons for the timeline that we've got outlined. But if we extended that timeline a little bit, as one suggested we might need to do, does that get us better candidates? Or is that just immaterial to the level of candidates? I don't know the answer to that. So that's something I would like to understand. Is, you know, if one firm is saying they're going to need more time, are we likely to get better candidates out of giving that time? Or is that just more time that we spend and causes us disruption that we've already discussed?
I think the, the comment about needing more time had to do with the consultant's availability. It didn't have anything to do with applicants. So I don't think we can infer that it would change. I mean, I think there's some argument that, you know, not recruiting over the summer might give us a different applicant pool, but we're not going to not do that. Um, but I think within the confines, the question you asked and the, you know, the playing field that we have, I think the only distinction in the timing, um, was the consultant's availability at the front end. And then the reality check of what amount of notice somebody might need to give at the backend. And that's going to be the same wherever.
And I think, I think the response was a blunt and, and I value that response quite a bit in selling us, you know, be realistic. And, and I think we, no matter who we pick, we should take that feedback in mind and work out how will we go forward.
And I think also we can, to Mr. Lucente's point about, you know, requirement versus preference, we need to make it clear that our preference is to have someone start on October 1st. But if we find the perfect person and they can't start until December 1st, we'll figure it out.
Right.
Hope that doesn't happen, but, um, but I think that does come down to, and I think that we put in, at least once, uh, that all of these times are, you know, preferred, but we understand they may need to adjust. So I don't think we've bound ourselves in any way. And I think I would suggest that we continue to do so in any materials that we send out.
So, um, so, so I came into this meeting with a strong preference. Somebody, one of the, one of the candidates said tonight, I would ask what people do rather than their philosophy. And I came in with very much that sort of preference coming into this meeting, saying, there's one firm that has done lots of Massachusetts recruitments. And one firm, we have experience doing lots of Massachusetts recruitments. And so that was sort of where I'm leaning. My natural instinct is to lean towards somebody that has done a, a larger track record of successful. My counterbalance on listening to the meetings today is there's sort of an old school versus new school kind of philosophy here. And I think we need to have that question for ourselves. Are we going old school or are we going new school?
I was thinking about that during the process because, well, you know, MRI was with us six years ago. And they were talking about the community, our communities, not the community it was six years ago. So they're, they've all got a learning curve, you know, to, to see where we are today and to learn about the community. And again, to get to what our preferences are and, you know, versus requirements, which is the same as needs and wants and all that.
Right. I, uh, so I agree. I think maybe going to Mr. Lucente's comment and, and really getting that first wedge question. How important is the Massachusetts network and insight? And I fear that it is really important. I, I, we have a lot of issues that are going to need active engagement with our legislative delegation that need to understand the uniqueness of the way our Commonwealth operates. And we're at, you know, if, if we were at, you know, an idle time, which I don't think we ever have, but if we had one, I'd say, um, you know, have bringing someone in who has government experience, but hasn't worked in, in, in our Commonwealth, will, will get there. But I, and, and I don't want to say that it's impossible, but it's, I just see us having a critical set of activities on our plate for the next three to five years that there is little to no, uh, learning curve time for that aspect of the job. Because there's going to be a lot of learning about our community. And, you know, it's how many, how many, um, different dimensions of, uh, newness do we want to put on the plate of whoever it is we hire? I would like to take a newer or less conventional approach to how we go out there. And if, if that approach were married to, uh, local context, it wouldn't be a question for. But, but for me, that, that's almost a deal breaker at this point.
Yeah. I just, I think, to your point, I think sitting at this table before we see any candidates and it, in theory, sounds really good to have, you know, someone from Midwest apply or someone from California, or, you know, it sounds like, oh, that would be, that would be a cool perspective. But I think when it comes to decision time, we're asking them specifically about their budgeting experience in Massachusetts. And how do you deal with overrides and prop two and a half? And I, I think we don't want a deer in the headlights. We want someone that says, here's how I've handled it successfully in my other communities. Here's how we built a, uh, uh, stabilization fund. Here's how we've done this. So those financial things are going to be very important and I'm just, I'm afraid.
How we work Article 97 through the legislature.
Exactly.
What's, what is, what is MSBA?
Yeah, practice. Right.
Right. So I'm gonna, um, I'm just looking for one thing I want to see here. But, um, I will say that the parallel to the smaller cohort of job applicants and the new generation piece is that, um, we are looking in different places to find those people. And I thought that the message about joining organizations that maybe aren't the ICMA and maybe aren't the MMA, um, or maybe are also. That they add the younger generation. It's sort of like, you know, go into TikTok instead of Facebook. And, and that actually was a piece that I didn't expect to resonate with me, but did. And it doesn't mean that we are not also going to be posting through ICMA, through the MMA. And so I think, I guess I'm slightly less concerned about not getting the Massachusetts candidates because the consultant themselves are, don't have necessarily the strongest network here, although they have some. I'm more concerned, and I guess the, the example I'll give you is with the MMA search last year. We used a firm that was based in Georgia. Only one candidate was out of state and, and that was Connecticut. Everybody else was somewhere in Massachusetts. Um, and so I think that the people who, um, who are appropriate within Massachusetts will become known, either because they will self-identify or because the network works that way. The people that, um, whoever our consultant is, does know, as they said, you know, they say, if you don't know, who do you recommend? And we all have contacts as well. Um, so I guess I'm slightly less concerned about that. And I'm slightly more interested in the idea that we may actually, first of all, put our efforts where we say we want them in, like, you know, seeing who are the more potential for more diverse candidates. The fact that the, and I, I think what changed my mind entirely was the answer about the number of places, not just that they are placing the ad, but the fact that they have people on those committees and involved in those organizations, the NFBPA, the ELGL, the, a couple of other ones. I didn't catch the acronyms. That they, you know, they have members on their team who actually, um, are on the committees within those organizations. Tells me that there's a likelihood, and keep in mind, we also talked about this before, that there are people who may currently be working out of state, but who have worked here. And you don't necessarily get only people currently working in Massachusetts who have Massachusetts, um, experience. And again, I'm sitting here doing my best law school devil's advocate. I'm not actually attempting to purely take a position on this. I'm just trying to respond to what I'm hearing at the table. So we consider everything.
I, I, I think one of the things we could, in that vein, consider is the work that Raff Tellus has done at different levels, not necessarily in executive hiring, but in, in consulting with various municipalities so that they are aware of some of, of the, uh, population. What wasn't clear to me was that, was there, was there enough of an intersection within the organization for the people who do that for the, with the people who are doing the search? And I didn't follow up. My question didn't occur to me at that time. The, um, uh, we do have experience with Raff Tellus. And the other sort of, you know, slight concern I have is our management structure recommendations didn't line up really well with the community. And that, that places an additional struggle for me with regard to them. Because I, I want to get there. Right. But I, I'm not seeing the road.
So what I'm hearing, just listening to you, is I think there's a decision here about Raff Tellus. I, I sense Jill is advocating really hard for them and that side of the table is fine if they're not part of the consideration. That's what I'm hearing.
Questions and answers? I, they, they did the best.
Yeah.
Yeah. To be honest, my concern is the, the depth of the bench that they could reach out to. And, um, and the timeline is, is another, Mr. Santin brought that up. The timeline is important. I think we, we don't want this to stretch out a year or some long period of time and.
I'm hoping a year is, is the unlikely worst case.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but, you know, more than the 16 weeks that we are, have on the table right now, I think there's a fair probability that it looks.
Yeah, I think, I think if we had, you know, if we had someone by December, I think we'd all be satisfied. But I think if it goes into another season, it'll, it'll become more perplexing for us.
Well, the other thing that happens is when these things stretch, candidates disappear.
Right.
So there's, there's this other aspect of the reduced timeline. It's like, people will wash out just if we take too long.
Yeah. Right. On that note, for a second, it's 10 o'clock. I do not want us to rush this. This is a critical decision for us. So I'm going to ask, can you, any of you stay beyond, can we all stay beyond noon? Because I think we all have to be discussing. We can, you know, we can put this to Wednesday and continue. And we can ask some follow-up questions and, and we can do some more of those background calls. But if we can stay a little longer today, I, I know I have a hard little line at noon with the school building committee. I will go late and watch the beginning afterwards.
We've had a pretty robust discussion. So in my opinion, we should just try to get to a, a straw poll, at least on where we're at. I, I, it's all fresh in our heads. We just heard it. I would prefer benefits to that. You know, I'm reading through my questions and answers now and.
So, Ms. Barry put out a, a tentative close on one of the first week three.
That's my question. Can we narrow it to two?
Right.
Or just people want to say their top two?
I'm willing to say my top two.
I'm willing to say my top two.
I, I honestly, I think the three of them bring different strengths. So I think also, you know, like still qualified in my head.
But given that, given that, I'm happy if, you know, other people have a straw, especially if you two have the same top two. I can go with that.
It'll be interesting.
My top two hasn't changed from the other night.
Which are?
MRI and Raff Tellus.
MRI and Raff Tellus.
Right. I did write that down. You're right. Suzie?
So my top two the other night were MRI and GovHR, and they've shifted to MRI and Raff Tellus.
Anybody else ready? I said I was.
Yeah, my, my, my top two would, would be GovHR and Raff Tellus. Sorry, don't help.
Joe?
I was hoping to have, uh, had my options narrowed. Because I have two sets. Sadly, I'd have to say it is GovHR and MRI. Sadly, I, I, these are all very qualified firms.
Right. Just from the sense of giving us consistency. I understand what you meant.
Right.
All right. So.
What do we got?
We've got three MRIs. We've got three Raff Tellus. We've got two GovHR.
Sounds like.
Right choice voting?
Yeah. Raff Tellus and.
And then Marauder, the HR, GovHR guys, one of both.
Just a quick question. Sorry for interrupting. Ms. A, did you want to put yours down in the mix?
She should.
Yes.
I'm just going to put it on the table.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I actually did the math incorrectly. I thought you had added yours.
No, I didn't. I didn't. I was actually letting you guys, because, um, so my, um, so I do have Raff Tellus definitely as one of my top two. I hear the concern and I guess that would be a follow-up conversation. And in particular, I do hear the concern. Conversation. And in particular, I do hear the concern. And this was what I came in with, the concern about what happened with the org. Assessment, because I think none of us were thrilled with how that. Played out. But it is a different. Group. I think what I heard anyway in the conversation was that. It gives them additional contacts in the state, but it seemed like it was a different team of people entirely. So. That's sort of, I, I, I was able to kind of put that concern to bed. As between the other two, I do have a little bit of a lingering. I was disappointed in the pool six years ago. I understand the pools are different now, and I suppose we can also make clear. That we want the bushes beaten, so to speak, to find other. Avenues, other organizations for direct placement. And I think. I think that is how I would come down over. Over Gov HR. Yep. So I think those are the two I would come down with.
Would you say it again?
So that ends up being Raftellus and MRI. Which is then. Three of us who have the same. MRI and Raftellus and then the other two. One of each, which gives Raftellus and MRI each four votes.
Yeah, so we're Gov HRs out.
Yeah, I think, right. I mean. I think that MRI actually from an impulse state. Reach, MRI was, was the strongest. And in, in many ways, that to me is the most important. Discriminating choice. So let's, let's remove Gov HR.
Okay, so then I think the question is, um, is there a reason to ask? And I'm happy to try and, you know, spend the time between now and our next meeting in four or five hours. Tracking down more of the 2022, 2023 references on either.
It's not on our agenda for tonight. So while the, the midi makeup is the choice of. So you can give an announcement on what you find.
I can give an announcement tonight and we could schedule something for a short meeting on Wednesday afternoon, which we may need to do anyway.
I don't understand. You know, we've all said we're comfortable with these firms. Why can't we make this, what's, what's holding us back?
Cause what's the deciding factor between the two firms?
Think, well, we should each identify what it is, right? Cause I'm not sure it's the same for each. I, I am, I am concerned that we. When it comes down to decision time for the town managers that are sitting here to interview. We are gonna definitely lean on the Massachusetts experience. And who knows, they may not even get out of the screening committee to get to us, the non. Non-Massachusetts ones. My. I, I am concerned though of how deep into the bench anyone, the firms will go, like, you know. There are different people. Underrepresented people in lower levels of government that may understand Massachusetts and all that, but maybe they haven't. Been given that opportunity to go to the chief role. And I think this again gets back to what are, what the requirements are that we're going to set. And if we're going to set must have five years, you know, top person experience, then that's gonna. We're gonna, we can all identify who those people that are. There's only 351 opportunities in Massachusetts and not even, right? So we know we can identify those people. So I think that's another level. I'm not sure which of the firms is going to do a better job at that. Perhaps we can ask MRI to do a better job. Going a level deeper, or perhaps we could. Trust that Raftellus will have good contacts to reach all of those people. You know, that are currently serving in. A big role in.
And they did say, actually, and I thought this was interesting, um, the knowledge base that we have the largest pool of assistants and deputies of any. State. So, which means that they're aware of the structure of. You know, of the, the different forms of, um, town management.
We'll also point out, we did this before, that there is a significant dollar difference between the two.
That's true too.
And one is, I believe it was reported in the, uh, 16,000. I thought it was 16 versus 37.
And there are a few add-ons.
Yes, yes.
Right.
That's all, that's my.
Is add-ons on the 37?
Add-ons on the 16. Add-ons on the 16. It doesn't include advertising either. And, um.
I'm just curious on the, on Raftellus. Did we put in the RFQ, so I didn't read it. Line for line. That they need to be, that the consultant needs to be present for these meetings with the screening committee, or are those going to be a combination of hybrid?
So their response, their response said that they are only in, they would, and that's actually, thank you, that's a, a differentiator, I forgot. Their response said that they would only be in person for. That they would not be doing the screening committee work in person. And I think the other one said that they would be in, like, three times. Yeah, and I, but I think just to put all the facts on the table. I think these guys also said three times in person.
Uh, there was a fixed number of, but that they would come at a, an additional.
Right. So, but that's true for both, that it would be an expenses added, but, um, yeah.
Okay, so am I hearing a change, Susan?
Any clarification over who's here when?
Need a little rubric.
So Raftellus definitely says, that one's pretty clear. Raftellus definitely says that they're here once. If you look on there, they have phases one, two, and three. I think they're.
All meetings will be virtual except for the final interviews, which will be in person.
So that's, and you also combined that with the concern about the schedule of running. That would be me that if we insisted that they come. We would have schedule issues as well as, as, as cost issue.
That, for me, that's a big, that's a big deal. I did not realize that and I apologize for not. Being tuned into that.
So we have a consensus.
Also MRI, by the way, provides the, um, the tenure guarantee. Remember they, they did that. If it doesn't work out within the year, they redo it. I'm willing, that never becomes relevant, just pointing it out.
It's a statement of their expectation.
Their expectation, exactly.
I really liked about their statement was said, if. We bring a candidate and the board does not agree on any of the candidates, we, we.
We do that, yes.
Which, I'm just saying, it's more than a 5% possibility.
The, in the other word, Raftellus says, if we hired someone else, we pay them a fee. As a finder's fee.
Yeah, there's somebody that was in the interview pool that we hired for a different position. So I. I think I'm hearing a little bit of a. Growing consensus. Do, do we want extra time? This is, this is non trivial.
I mean, I do believe in, in, you know, MRI is one of the groups with which I was able to get a pretty strong reference as well as we have our own experience. So. Um, and I think I started up, as we all pretty much did, saying all of these people are completely qualified. And I think that. I do sort of get the sense of the room as well, that there seems to be a consensus towards MRI. And I think that we can make clear our. Strong, um, desire for them to adopt. Participation in some other less traditional.
Yes.
Avenues. And continue to clarify our expectations. And they did say at the beginning that their pools are running. About 50% women or minorities currently. Um, they did say that they were leaning heavily on ICMA advertising. And different, you know, subgroups within the ICMA. But again, I think we can push them to expand beyond that.
And I think, once it gets past the cold call stage. It's going to be the way the screening committee interacts with the candidates. That's going to sort of set the welcomingness of the community.
I mean, I will say, and this was part of my thinking in. In my preference on Raftellus actually is that, you know. What we say and what we do need to align with each other. And in the same way that can, we say that we really want a diverse pool, that we would love to see. You know, ourselves break a, a barrier that has existed. And yet. Here we sit, five white people, and we're hiring a team of all white people to be our executive recruiters. Let's be honest with ourselves. What message are we sending? And people will look at that. Now, that said. You know, we didn't have, again, there weren't choices presented to us that looked different. There are a woman, a woman. Out of this pool, but, you know, so I think we need to be very conscious of. And that would be for our next conversation, who is on the screening committee? And what we do as far as putting together additional community panels and opportunities to showcase. Who we are. Um, and make sure that everybody recognizes that, you know. We are trying.
Right, who we are and who we want our next manager to be comfortable.
What we value.
Engaging with.
So there's maybe a procurement question here, but. You know, we've put an RFP out, we've got RFP responses. Can we say we accept your proposal, but, or, and in addition, we want some extra.
Well, so the advertising.
This is in this direction.
Well, we have, the advertising is extra anyway on this. It's not included in their pricing. So we can advertise as many places as we can find.
So we're comfortable that we can say, to your point, what I'm hearing you say, Jill, is, is you would like to see. Us walking.
The walk.
The walk, yes, right. Walking the top, whatever.
Walking the talk is difficult.
And, and I'm just asking if we have flexibility regardless of which one we select to, to give that guidance and requirement. That this is the way we want you to do.
Yeah, I think especially if, you know, where we're talking about MRI and the pricing doesn't include the advertising, because that's really going to be where that cost comes in, Mark. Otherwise, it's not a procurement piece.
The other part is you two are also on the selection committee. So you can, you know, continue to monitor that. On a very timely basis and convey the wishes of this board.
You represent those very.
I just want to make sure we can do that.
And to be fair, we also have our own, I mean, I sit on the MMA's DEI. Group and I will make sure that they all have it as well, so that it goes out, you know, in those circles as well. So that, that will help us as well.
I think I'm hearing closure.
It feels that way.
So, so I, I believe we're choosing MRI. Is anybody, everybody okay? All right, then let me make. A formal motion, where I put it. So I moved to contract for the executive search consulting service for town manager's position to.
Municipal resources.
Municipal Resources Incorporated, MRI. And authorize the select board chair or their designate to negotiate the final terms of the contract and sign the contract on the select board's behalf. Moved and seconded all in favor, say aye. Then you oppose, say nay. None, it is unanimous, five zero. Thank you.
So Liz has kindly agreed to help us out on that contract, by the way.
Yeah, and I didn't say you waving, you're making a mistake.
I assume with Carolyn also, we should. Reway on the contract, is that right? Oh, I'm sorry.
So, item number three, we're deferring to, um, uh, this evening, which is on our agenda this evening, but do think about it if you can in the few hours. And, uh, that brings us to adjournment. So the next regular scheduled meeting of the board is tonight at. 6:30 PM and it will be hybrid participation and it is a full regular meeting. Uh, I move that we adjourn. Move the seconded all in favor. Uh, we are adjourned, five zero.